Okay, I apologize for the delay. I was not able to get the permission to livestream this. So but for those who are here as attendees on our Zoom call, we're going to get started. Do our moderators want to start with the welcome to those who are with us tonight?
Absolutely. We just say good evening to everyone. We thank you so much for attending OmniRide's virtual town hall. We're so happy to have you with us tonight. Myself, Cynthia Porter Johnson and Holly Morello will be your moderators.
Evening, everyone. I hope that you can hear me. My name is Holly Morello and I am the TDM Program Manager at OmniRide, and I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's virtual town hall. I will be moderating along with Cynthia, who you just heard from. And first up, we've got a few housekeeping items. Tonight's meeting is in webinar format. I think you're all aware that all the attendees have been muted with no cameras, except for the hosts and the panelists. There is a Q and A box at the bottom of the screen for those who would like to submit questions. Cynthia and I will gather those, and after introductions and opening remarks, we will dive right into the questions. I also wanted to make you aware that we have Spanish translation services available for tonight's town hall as part of our efforts to expand and improve our reach within the community. Questions can be typed into the chat in Spanish, and our translator will ask the panel the questions and respond back in Spanish. And with that, I'm going to turn the virtual mic over to Gabriela Zabalua so she can provide a translation of the comments I just made.
Muy buenas tardes. Holly Morello acaba de anunciar que esta videoconferencia va a tener una traducción al español. Yo voy a proveer el servicio. A aquellas personas que quieran hacer preguntas en español, por favor, tipeenlas, escribanlas en la parte del chat que aparece abajo de la pantalla. Yo voy a contestar, voy a hacer la pregunta en inglés a los panelistas y voy a contestarla en español para aquellos que hicieron la pregunta. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much. I didn't know what I said. It was so beautiful. Sounds wonderful when you translate it. And now I'm going to turn things over to Cynthia so that she can introduce our panelists.
Thank you so much, Holly. Again, I'm Cynthia Porter Johnson and I'm a project manager in ransom project management here at OmniRide. And I just want to share with you that we have a very distinguished panel of OmniRide staff with us this evening. Together combined, they have more than 50 years of experience in transit and the transportation industry. They will be speaking with us tonight, and I have the pleasure of introducing them to you. So on our panel, we have OmniRide's Executive Director, Dr. Bob Snyder. We have Mr. Joe Stansby, who is OmniRide's Chief Development Officer. Also on our panel is OmniRide's Director of Planning and Operations, Mr. Perrin Palastrant. Next, we have Ms. Althea Evans, who is OmniRide's Director of Marketing. And last, but definitely not least, is Ms. Barbara Murdock, who is the General Manager at Keolis, OmniRide's Bus Contractor. And so now I am going to ask each of our panelists to just take a few minutes to share a little bit about their background and also describe for us their field of expertise, what it is that they do here at OmniRide.
Who goes first?
We're gonna start with you, Bob.
Great. Bob Schneider, Executive Director here at OmniRide. We're also known as PRTC, which is the Commission for the Six Jurisdictions. We do operate services in Manassas, Manassas Park, Prince William County, as well as commuter services in the Stafford County area. Been here a little over four years and been a lot of change in the organization. We're very excited. I came here prior to that from the Comet in Columbia, South Carolina. Prior to that, I was on the private sector side in operational contract management, oversaw Valley Ride in Boise, Idaho, and prior to that Knoxville Area Transit and Knoxville, Tennessee, where I was the Chief Operating Officer amongst some other jobs. Actually, I have a PhD in public political science focusing on public administration. So a lot of people ask, what's a PhD doing in transit? Well, as you'll hear tonight, there's federal grants, state grants, federal processes, boards of commission, lots of technical requirements, regulations and rules, and all of those things dovetail together. So I've chosen transit because it's the ability to make a difference in your community. And while we've got some great transit expertise, one of the things you'll notice we have more than anything in this group is a passion for making an impact in our own towns and neighborhoods.
Thank you so much, Bob. Next, we're gonna have Mr. Joe Stansby.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. Good evening, everybody. Wonderful to be with you tonight. So yeah, my name is Joe Stansby. I'm the Chief Development Officer for OmniRide. I've been in the position about a year. I oversee our operations planning department, our marketing department, and our mobility services team, which is our TDM. In a nutshell, what I do is leading OmniRide into the future in terms of leading away from being just a pure fixed route transit agency towards being a mobility agency, helping people get through the community in whatever way they can using our entire pantheon of services, from local fixed route to van pools to telework, whatever people need. That's my job to make sure that they can access those services. I've been with OmniRide for nine years now in this capacity, in this position for a year. Just under, before that, I ran the Vanpool program, which is one of the largest in the United States. Before that, I worked in the private sector for about nine years in the Vanpool business. And before that, I was actually in the nonprofit. I guess you'd call it like a political kind of election protection type realm. I'm obviously English, as you've no doubt figured out. I have degrees in sociology and social anthropology. So again, it's those diverse backgrounds. And I'll, I guess I get to be the first one to repeat it. The reason that I joined transit was purely and simply to do something that makes a difference. We all have to earn money and we all have to, you know, make a living. But I wanted to do something that allowed me to contribute to the community in which I lived, and this has proven to be that, and I'm honored to do it and very thankful to be here this evening.
Thank you so very much, Joe. Now we're gonna hear from Mr. Perrin Palastrant.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to be on the panel tonight. I'm Perrin Palastrant, the Director of Operations and Planning at OmniRide. I started off really in transit by virtue of growing up in Prince George's County in the seventies and eighties. I'm a native Washingtonian. We had no car in my household, so I used transit, public transit, to get it everywhere. In the early nineties, I got a start as a bus operator at the University of Maryland at Shuttle U. I got my degree in economics there, and then I worked as a dispatcher for Metro Access. I worked as a transit analyst for the National Transit Database, and then I got my big jump into transit planning in the early 2000s with OmniRide. I was here for a few years, and I moved to Las Vegas and worked with the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada for eight years, and then came back to OmniRide in 2015 as the Director of Operation Planning. So I've been able to see the full gamut of transit planning and transit operations. And then also as a user of it, my department oversees the planning and scheduling of the agency. I oversee the customer service department. I also oversee our contractor who operates our services. So for me, this is great because I got to use it growing up. I'm now working in it, and I can help make a difference and work with this wonderful community. And I'm just, I'm looking forward to tonight and hopefully some good conversation.
Well, thanks so much, Perrin. As I shared with you all, we have a wealth of knowledge and experience here. And so next, we're gonna hear from Ms. Althea Evans.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Althea Evans. As Cynthia said, I am a 25-year employee here at OmniRide. I'm a 27-year resident within Prince William County. I am a transplanted New Yorker, and so I had lots of early experience using transit growing up. Used transit to get to and from high school and to my first jobs in the city in Manhattan. And so I have an intimate knowledge of how to ride a bus and train. I've had a, certainly had an opportunity to grow up with the agency, having been here for 25 years. When I joined, I joined as the Marketing Assistant and have been promoted over time to now the Director of the Department. When I first joined the agency, we had a fleet of less than 70 buses. Today, our fleet is well over 150 buses. When I first started, our local bus service stopped at 6:00 PM in the evenings. We now go to 11:00 PM at night. So I, again, I've had a chance to really grow with the agency. We even now have service that originates outside of the county, which we started about a year and a half ago, which is something brand new for us. So it's been an exciting time for me. I actually am one of those people who stumbled into transit. I was working in the banking industry, marketing small business loans. And my job was, the company did a reorg and my job went away. And so, so I'm adding the paper for a position that was literally two stoplights from my home. Who wouldn't have applied for that? And here I am 25 years later. With regards to what the marketing department does for the agency, we do a lot of the forward-facing things. The information displays that you see at bus stop signs, the printed bus schedules. The, we administer the agency's website. Much of the communication, the advertising publicity. If you see people at events, if you meet someone at an outreach event, it's entirely possible that they're a part of the marketing team. I'm excited to be with you tonight, and I hope that we'll be able to give you some valuable information.
Althea, thank you so very much. We really appreciate all that you and your team does here at OmniRide. Now we're gonna finally hear from Ms. Barbara Murdock.
Good evening, team. I'm the GM here at OmniRide, working for Keolis. My team is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the bus system, making sure the buses get out on time, safe every day. Keolis acquired this contract back in November of 2020. It's a five-year contract managing the bus system. Keolis is a worldwide management company in the bus and rail industry. And I've been with Keolis two years. I've been in the transit industry over 30 years in leadership positions for maintenance, operation, executive leadership. And I started my career as a news reporter covering public transit.
Wow, well, thank you so much, Barbara. Again, we're grateful for you and for Keolis and definitely how you're managing and operating our bus services. So many thanks to all of our panelists. So right now, I'm gonna ask Bob if you could start us off by simply giving us the state of OmniRide. And as you prepare, I would like to mention to all of our attendees that as you're listening to Bob's State of OmniRide address, please feel free to enter any questions that you may have in the question-answer box, which you can find at the bottom of the Zoom link. And we're excited, we're looking forward to hearing whatever questions that you may have. We want to jump right into the town hall and discuss those areas of our service that are really most important to you. So now we're gonna have Bob come and give us the state of OmniRide.
Thank you very much. This is the first OmniRide Town Hall in this format. Over the past few years, I'm sure some of the folks at home, so to speak, have seen us at the many town halls from Haymarket to Quantico and Woodbridge, just across the region, seen us in Manassas. We've been in every district in Prince William County. We've been on panels with Metro and VRE. We've talked shop with DRPT and NVTC and NVTA and the other NVTA, lots of different acronyms. And we're all very active and involved in that. But this is the first time we've really put ourselves in the sole spotlight as OmniRide, the organization, and brought our own panel together for this type of meeting. We've brought together myself as Executive Director, Perrin Palastrant, who oversees the planning, Joe Stansby, who really does pull together the TDM, the Vanpool components, but looks more strategically at how we expand our footprint and take in that mobility component. But with that is the critical component of customer service and communication and outreach, which is why it's so important that Althea join us. But truly, truly not last and truly not least is our operations group, which tends to, we mentioned last, and the reason we mention often them last is because there's so much of what they do. Every single operator, every single mechanic, every single route that hits the street takes place under the careful, steady watch of our general manager. So you've got everything from operations to communicating, to planning, to the different grant programs, development, as well as, of course, all of our budgeting, government relations, all on one panel. So it's our first time we've really been able to do this together. So there are a few things I did want to touch on before we get to the questions. The questions are always the fun part of these events because we get to think about topics more differently. But first, the obvious thing we want to talk about is COVID-19 and our pandemic response, which really is, in essence, the state of OmniRide moving forward. Where we've been, yes, but really, we want to talk more about where we're going and what it's, what impact it's had as we move forward. But the very first thing I want to do before I get into all of that is thank our first providers. Last spring was scary, no question, and they were on the front lines every day. And when I say every day, every day, we never closed. There was never a day where we said, you know what, we're not going to operate any services. We ran every day of service for the past year. There's been no change in that, and we kept 100% of our local services intact. And that's because we needed to keep our local economy going. Even though the commuter services plummeted, our local service rebounded relatively quickly, pretty quickly, or relatively well, pretty quickly. So it was a big impact, and it was scary for them because they were making all sorts of policy changes. We were learning about things, and it was very, very, very difficult for them. They never said no to our customers. While we've all had our own COVID-19 stories to tell, they lived on the front lines of a pandemic and did an exceptional job. So the next time you ride or the next time you see a transit worker, if they're your neighbor, doesn't even matter if they're with OmniRide, please say thank you. The healthcare workers get a lot of love and attention, and it's well-deserved, but our wonderfully talented and caring workforce may pull out every day, and for that, we owe them and we thank them. I can say this, there was no class when managing a transit system through COVID-19 and all of my National Transit Institute training classes or conferences with the American Public Transportation Association. I certainly didn't take any courses on managing a workforce through a pandemic in my academic coursework, but we learned. We made mistakes, but more than anything, we improved on our response every single week, just as most organizations did. Our core values have always been about first and foremost, safety, followed by reliability. And the reason it's safety then reliability is if you're not safe, you're certainly not reliable because you don't know if you'll get there. Following reliability has always been our friendliness. After that was cleanliness, comfortability, and cost effectiveness. In that order, cost effectiveness is last because you can't get to that without the big four before it. What has really changed about the pandemic is cleanliness wasn't really the big focus. Yes, you wanted your buses clean, you wanted them, you know, presentable. We've redefined what cleanliness is, not just as an industry, but as a community. And it is now relentless focus, and it's part of safety as a core value. So while that has been something that the pandemic brought to us, it's something we're going to keep in place, and it will not leave our organization as we move forward. While COVID-19 occupied our attention, it did not define us. We had some very exciting things that did happen. First and foremost is the TSA Gold Standard Award. TSA is the Transportation Security Administration of the federal government out of the Office of Homeland Security. The Gold Standard Award is excellence for security and safety, but especially security. And we were the first bus-only system in the entire DC metro area to receive this. The only two other transit systems that have received this award are the two train operators, VRE as well as Metro. So we're very, very impressed and honored, and we all have our lapel pins that we wear to celebrate that. We also transitioned from our prior operations and maintenance contractor of about 20 years to Keolis. And that was a big, big transition because how do you shift in such a dynamic time as a pandemic when you don't know what your service levels are going to be? So it took a lot of heavy lifting, but also took a lot of communication, a lot of focus with the employees to help them understand what change will be. Most employees had never had that employer change in terms of working at OmniRide, and that was a big change for them. But Keolis did an outstanding job and we're in a much better position than we were six months ago in terms of the employees understanding where we're going and what we're doing. We were also a finalist for the Prince William County Chamber Large Business Award. We did lose out to Novant Health. It's kind of tough to compete with a hospital. I've got a call. It's okay. Sorry, we had a visitor. Tough to compete with a hospital in the middle of a pandemic, but we were thrilled to be nominated as a finalist. We brought on new buses online just about a month ago. That was very exciting to bring in part of that new fleet as we continue to grow and prepare for the next tranche of services. And we launched services from a new state-of-the-art Western maintenance facility near the 234 Balls Ford Road intersection as part of the planned growth in Western Prince William and Manassas related to I-66 that launched on June 7th. Did a fantastic job, went about as well as it possibly could. And then we've had constant focus and attention on our financial status while ensuring our employees had the resource to do their job smartly and safely, whether it was behind the wheel of a transit vehicle, in the maintenance department, or working from home. We've been paid close attention to our bottom line, but adjusting services to reflect the ridership volumes. And as we answer questions tonight, we'll not just talk about where we've been, but most important, we'll talk about where we're going. We can talk big picture, we can talk little picture, national trends. Our panel is over, really, as we said, over 50. I think we're probably closer to 100 years of transportation experience and connections throughout the United States and beyond. Finally, I wanted to say thank you to our commissioners and the varying staff from the six jurisdictions of Prince William County, Manassas, Manassas Park, City of Fredericksburg, Stafford and Spotsmines Counties. Their support has been unwavering. And I really do want to include our friends at the DC area and Virginia Transit Systems. I want to specifically thank Art in Arlington, Dash in Alexandria, Metro in DC, VRE Fairfax Connector, Fred Transit, Loudoun County Transit, and yes, Hampton Roads and GRTC in Richmond, Montgomery and Prince George's County in Maryland. We all pulled together to, as the bigger systems in the state of Virginia, as well as the DMV, pulled together this last year to do some amazing things and grow together. And we're all coming out of this, as we call it, the great unraveling now, and positioning forward to launch the organization, to launch transit, and to push things further in a new and more robust way. So that is the state of OmniRide as it is. We've got questions that have come through the chat, but for now, I'll turn things back to Cynthia, Holly, and start with those, and also some that were submitted prior to the session tonight. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Bob. We do have a question in the chat, and I'm going to read it from Alan Muchnick. What is the status of improvements to the bus hub at the Manassas Judicial Center? And what are the prospects for moving this bus hub closer to the Manassas VRE station? And I'm thinking, Perrin, that might be a good one for you.
Yes, thank you, Holly, and thank you for that question. The Western hub has been something we've been focusing on quite a bit. And we moved there in December 2019 to be specifically located near a lot of the central locations in Western Prince William County. The courthouse was certainly a top area, as well as the walkability to other places, right in the downtown, historic downtown area where we had been. Manassas Mall was no longer conducive, and we saw the ridership patterns that we needed to be downtown. There's a few different things that we're looking at with the hub. Two of them are looking at improvements to either the existing side of the hub that we're on now and also working with Prince William County to look at the undeveloped side that's on the other side of Mosby Street. There's redevelopment plans in that area that includes the courthouse, and they've included potential transit mobility improvements as part of it. Secondly, we've also been working with the city of Manassas about the potential of looking at the Manassas VRE. If any of these at the hub where we're at now really don't work out or there is something that keeps us from doing that. So we are looking at the Manassas VRE as the potential. There's some things that would have to be done to make that work better for us to maneuver the buses through there. But we're really looking at all things downtown to see what makes the most sense and what we can do to really build that hub up to be what it should be and be comfortable for everybody and be a great place for the buses to connect.
Thanks so much, Perrin. Much appreciated. Turn it over to you for the next question.
Actually, I do interject a little bit if possible. Is, we did try to put in for a grant to do some upgrades and improvements with that through the new round, the federal government's doing congressional earmarks. Unfortunately, that wasn't very successful. So we'll be trying to make some improvements there and maybe have some site engineering moving forward so that the next round of funding comes up. Maybe we'll be in a better position for that. So we're looking not just for future development that's coming, but trying to seize the opportunity to make those improvements. We are looking at other avenues and opportunities and hopefully trying to get some amenities for the customers very soon.
Thanks so much, Bob. So our next question has to do with the fact that things are really improving for us in terms of, we know we have a lot of folks that are getting the shot, the vaccine. And so with that, most of the pandemic-related changes have been lifted. So what do you still require? Why is it that we still require face mask on our buses? This is a question that some of our attendees would like to know. But maybe it'd be a good question for you, Bob?
Certainly. So the TSA implemented a face mask mandate around end of January, early February. There was no mandate prior to that. And again, this is the Transportation Safety Administration, and it's applicable to any transit system that receives federal funding or has interstate transportation. And we fit the bill in all those categories. So the mask mandate really is targeted more toward long-distance trains, airports, et cetera. But if you are indoors in a facility or if you are indoors in a transit vehicle of any kind, then you must still wear the mask, and that is part of that requirement. And we don't have control over that. We've noted, we've mentioned that to TSA, FTA and others, and we're looking for maybe adjustment in that guidance. But regardless of what the state does, we are under that mandate, and we'll have to follow that accordingly. So even though the vaccines are happening, still the case of when I walk out of an office, mask goes on when I ride that transit vehicle. If I'm off the vehicle, or if I'm at a bus stop, or if I'm at our transfer point, mask is not required outside at all. But once you do step on our transit vehicles or indoors of one of our transit facilities, you do have to mask up.
Well, we definitely appreciate that explanation. I know they'll be helpful for our riders.
Okay, I'm going to move on. We've got another question in the Q and A section. Does OmniRide have or plan to have buses powered by alternative fuels/electric? And this is a great question, very timely, and I think it might be another one for you, Perrin.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure. We are actually looking at alternative vehicles, alternative fuel vehicles. Actually, we had a visitor for Lotera, which makes electric buses. They came by with a demo bus for us last week. And in our budget for FY22, we have funding to commence a study to look at the various types of zero. to look at the various types of zero emissions that we could do. It may not be electric. It could be hydrogen fuel cell, compressed natural gas, renewable natural gas. We're going to look at the whole gamut of everything that's zero emissions and do peer reviews and look at the different options that the different manufacturers offer to us and then really be able to come into it well-educated and know what infrastructure that we need. So if it is electric, what do we have to do with NOVAC or Dominion Energy? And then work with the various manufacturers to make sure that the buses we get are sustainable and they do last 12 to 15 years that we do have the vehicles. It's a big investment. And we want to start off maybe with a small pool of vehicles and learn from them before we go ahead and invest even more. Right now, the manufacturers indicate what their range is. That's the very high end at perfect conditions. What is it when you have a fully loaded bus with the air conditioning going or the heat going? And you're going uphill and you're just doing normal things. What does that range end up being? And so we have to know, so is it a one-for-one replacement with a diesel bus? Is it one and a half to one? And that way we know what that perfect number of vehicles is to make sure that we can do the full duty cycle of a day. And then on the commuter side, those are just starting to get to get produced. So there isn't a whole lot on the commuter side. More of it's on the typical stop-and-go local bus type of vehicles and not a whole lot on the long-distance buses. But we're working with different manufacturers. We're learning a lot and I think it's really exciting for us.
And just to build on that a little bit is that, you know, as Perrin points out, it's an extremely dynamic space. We just had a Proterra demo bus last week, as he mentioned. And, you know, we had people from Art, people from Dash, people from Fairfax, you know, come out as well. And we, as a community, are looking at these things as the industry is kind of dipping its toe into the waters. And, you know, fortunately, we do have this money to do this study in FY22 because there's a lot of moving parts. You have a frame for a bus that might have a longer lifespan than a conventional-fueled vehicle, but you have batteries on the bus that cost $275,000, right? So, and those might only have a useful capacity life in non-California environments of seven to eight years. So do you want to keep spending a quarter of a million dollars every eight years on a bus? How does that compare to a midlife overhaul cost on a regular bus? Are there certain routes that these would run on versus other routes that maybe it might not work on? So it's definitely something that we are considering extremely closely. I think we'll probably make some moves in that space, but it is very important that we are looking at the whole pantheon of what is considered zero emission, which is not just, you know, running on big copper tops. You know, this is the compressed natural gas. These are these other alternatives and we may look at doing different things on the local side or for certain local routes that where you have downtime, maybe you've got three or four hours to charge a bus, which you don't have on other routes. You have to put a lot more thought into it and you don't want to build this infrastructure without having paid due care intention. And so we will have the ability to do that over the course of the next fiscal year and then make the moves and order the buses and do what we need to do.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Joe. We're going to move on. We have a few other questions. And this particular question, again, has to do with a lot of the improvements that are being made regarding COVID and questions about what are we doing as OmniRide to bring the commuters that we've lost back to our services? And I think that one would be appropriate for our marketing director, Althea.
So, we anticipate that probably late summer, early fall, we're really going to see people starting to make that move to go back into the office. It'll be past summer vacation. Everyone will be vaccinated. And it's almost like, you know, September is kind of like the new year all over again. So just as some background, when we all went into lockdown last year, one of the things that we did was we simply went dark on all of our outreach and promotional activities. We didn't do any advertising. We continued to communicate directly with those of our riders who were still riding. We let people know what service levels were, but in terms of trying to bring anyone new within to into the service, we didn't do any of those efforts. And so we're going to be, we have started to ramp them back up, but we're going to be doing that in earnest come fall. We are going to, for one, embark on a campaign to bring back those people, to make them feel comfortable, to know that we're still here for them and it's safe to ride with us. One very valuable tool that we have is we have a an email and text message subscription system. Within that, we've got more than 12,000 subscribed addresses. We're going to start to push information out to those folks to say, hey, if you've taken some time off, we're here, we're ready, it's safe, it's comfortable. And then we're also going to do some outreach to the media so that we get some media attention and get them to write about us, to let the general public know that we're here. And in addition to that, we're going to do some paid promotions. We're going to run advertising on a variety of different platforms, including targeted digital ads that'll be delivered to people in a variety of different platforms, whether it's Facebook or some other digital format. It'll be served up to a particular demographic that we consider to be our ridership. One thing that we also know is that within this area, there is a significant annual turnover in population. Because of the high military concentration, because of the high level of government contractors, there's always a significant population turnover. So one of the things that we have always done is to target publicity to those newcomers. And that is the one area where we did not go dark during the pandemic because we knew that people were still coming in. And so we were still continuing our Welcome to the Neighborhood campaign. And last but not least, a number of regional transit providers and transportation commissions, we're going to be banding together as a group to multiply the dollars that we have for publicity. And there's going to be a regional campaign to the public to say, transit is ready for you when you are. Come on back.
Thank you so much, Althea. We've got another question queued up. Perrin, I think this one might be for you as well. The question is, when will you resume operating full service on commuter routes?
Thank you, Holly. Yeah, this has been an interesting year for sure. Commuter bus pre-pandemic was about 75 to 80% of our overall service provided and our overall ridership base. During the pandemic, we saw that flip because many of the frontline employees rode the local bus. But now things are starting to turn again and we're seeing increases occurring across certain routes on the commuter side. We've just taken away all the seating restraints on the buses too, so we're no longer faced with overcrowding with a half-full bus. We now can offer all the seats on the buses. So what we're doing now is as people are coming back, watching what routes and which trips are having maybe overcrowding issues or near overcrowding issues and do it smartly, just grow in there where we really need it and then just continue to monitor the ridership through the fall and the spring. One other thing we're looking at doing is adjusting some of the times when buses are available. We were, the commuters were traditional peak, you know, 4:30 AM to around 7:30, 8 AM. And then it starts back up at 3 PM to 6 or 7 PM in the evening. But we know that people want that flexibility to be able to go in later in the morning or come home earlier in the afternoon. We've met some folks while we were doing our outreach for the service change where people are riding at one or two days a week, but they're still choosing to ride transit. So we want to be able to give people that opportunity. If you're only going to ride a couple of days a week, that's great. Still ride with us. If you need to go into work at 10 AM, let's try to have a bus available at 9 AM from the commuter lot to get you there and have a bus at 1:00 or 1:30 PM so you can get home. That way people who have to tend to their children can drop them off in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon or, you know, work all different types of shifts. So we want to be flexible and that's what we're going to be through this as we're reopening here, being flexible, looking at where the demand is, both locally and commuter-wise, and then just trying to rebuild ourselves so we can be the best and that we can be for the new ridership patterns that are going to be developing.
Thanks, Perrin. That's great. And I'll let Cynthia ask the next question.
Yes, our next question has to do with the fact that, you know, as we do have our passengers returning to our service, many of them may be wondering why they're not able to pay their bus fare with the mobile ticketing app. Joe, I think hopefully you can take this one.
Well, we'll find out, won't we? Yeah, I'll certainly be game to have a go at it. The short answer for this is, in some instances, you can. Okay? So on our commuter services, you know, if you have the SmartTrip app, which is now available both on, you know, on Android and also on Apple, you can just, you know, tap those in the right place. That is now live. That is functionality that we have there. In the, on the wider scale of things, we are looking at the mobile appification of OmniRide, if you will. You know, this is something where we wanted to dip our toes into the water appropriately. As many folks on the phone will know, we are currently fare-free on the local side and we are also going to remain fare-free in FY22. So this is something that we are looking at. In a perfect world, being able to offer to the citizens of Prince William County, but it depends on a lot of other, you know, budget things on into the future. So if we do that, well, then you don't necessarily have the need so much, at least on one half of our service, for mobile ticketing because you could just have some kind of visual validation. You know, where the person comes onto the bus, the operator clicks a button and that person is registered as a rider. Or there's some kind of APC, Automated Personnel Counter, which is a laser beam that you break and someone comes on and that's how we get our counts. And in that case, well, then maybe we don't really need a mobile app for that. But so our sister, our sister agency, VRE, you know, a lot of people don't realize that VRE and OmniRide are the same side, different sides of the same coin. They've recently just launched VRE Mobile. We are in discussions with the provider that they use and also other providers to at least look at the viability of mobile ticketing. And the real goal of this would be able to offer something, the holy grail would be the joint fare product. You know, VRE is really good at moving people into DC in the morning and getting them out in the afternoon and obviously terrible at getting them from in DC in the morning, out into the suburbs and the reverse. We have a much more networked service. And if we did pursue this mobile ticketing option, it would be to have these joint fare products where you could essentially transfer to and from our services to their services. We could sync up more of our, you know, our pickup points with their stations and you could flow more effectively through all of PRTC services, not have VRE and OmniRide be quite so ring-fenced. So I guess the short answer, Cynthia, is that in some ways you currently can, but we're working towards a future where you'll be able to do that in whatever ways it makes sense because there is obviously a real dollars and cents cost attached to going down the mobile ticketing route. And if some parts of our service are going to remain fare-free in the short term, potentially medium term and long term, how do we want to implement that so that it's worth having is the point.
Thanks, Joe, very much. And the next question I think is going to be right up Barbara's alley. I did see something in the chat about how she might be having difficulty with her audio, but I'm going to ask it anyway and see if maybe it's back on.
I'm back.
Oh, good, good. The question is, why do I have a new bus driver every few months?
We know a lot of our riders get accustomed to the same person daily. But every few months, we have a bid where the workforce gets to choose the route that they want. And with seniority in the mix, you may not get the same bus driver because they may not be at the top of the seniority list. Also, there are times when bus drivers take extended vacations and we might have to field their route with backup drivers. While we understand that on those commuter routes, a lot of friendships are formed, we also have to make sure that we keep happy employees.
Thank you so much. And I've got a quick follow-up to that one. And that is, what level of training do new drivers get when they come onboard at OmniRide?
At OmniRide and with Keolos, safety is first. So they get extensive safety training. Then after they've chosen the route that they'd like to have, they get route-specific training so that they'll know which directions to go on that route and if there are any particular nuances that are needed. But training is ongoing with in our workplace. And every time there is an incident or an accident, drivers are retrained. If someone goes off route, they're retrained again on that route. So it's an integral part of our operations.
Thank you so much, Barbara. Bob, I think this next one is for you. This particular question has to do with the fact that we've talked a lot about the free fares that we have on our local services. So with the loss of the passenger fares for 2020 as well as 2021, just how have you been able to balance the OmniRide budget? And have you had to have any layoffs is the question.
Great question. No layoffs. We're very fortunate for that. What helped us was within weeks, and I mean 14 days or so, DRPT, which is the Department of Rail and Public Transportation, immediately infused us with a 1/12 of our fiscal year just cash infusion to help deal, help us figure out what was going on. Very quickly, staff identified where the ridership plummeted and we immediately reduced services to match that. Large number of employees said, you know what? I'm going to hang out at home for a little while till this whole pandemic thing happens because hanging out on the front lines of a pandemic might not be the thing for me. So between the blend of that, we reduced our fuel consumption, we reduced the number of hours we ran, et cetera. No one lost a paycheck. Matter of fact, there were times where extra training got done. So there were ways we took advantage of that, but the big difference came with the CARES Act, which I'm sure everyone's very familiar with. That was the, on the individual side, it was more the first stimulus package that came for families. It also is the payroll protection program where businesses could borrow money and much of that's been forgiven on the private sector. We just received a cash infusion for that that helped fill that hole. Now, it's very easy just to spend that federal money as if, hey, we just got, you know, a free check from Uncle Sam, but we did not take that approach. First and foremost, we spent that money for PPE and to take care of the employees. So that's where you saw in the building, the hand sanitizer, we bought barriers for the transit vehicles. By the way, it took forever to get them because immediately every one in the country wanted a barrier for a transit vehicle. So something that was very rare on transit vehicle became as common as a radio or a fare box. So that was a big shift there. Spent those dollars, but we've been smart with the money in terms of spending where necessary. And as we have had attrition in the workforce, we've looked at those routes that just simply don't have the ridership to stand behind it and we've turned the volume down or turned down the intensity or frequency. And that's helped us really reserve resources. Without question, we've had to use the CARES funding. And then back in December, there was another tranche of money called nicknamed Chrisa, but it was the supplemental CARES funding. And then most recently, ARPA, which is the American Recovery, I forget all the acronyms I've used it so much, but the Recovery Act for that. And what's that, that allows us to do is it recognizes that we had a hit to our motor fuels tax because people were pumping less gas. Ironically, the state did really well on sales tax because people were buying things through the internet, but we got heard at the county levels, for example, where we weren't seeing as much money spent in terms of retail tax and things of that nature. It was more on the internet side of things. So that's allowed us to back So that's allowed us to backfill where we might have lost money for vehicle match, that does federal funds supplement that. So it's really a combination of, yes, we did get an infusion from the feds, but we have been very, very wise with our money. Our procurements have been smart. Our service development has been smart. Our hiring has been smart in terms of number of operators. And we've done some really good work to contain those costs. And quite frankly, in terms of, there's lots of things I'm proud about at the pandemic, but in terms of the administrative staff, that's the thing that impresses me most. Where a lot of other agencies, they bled cash during the pandemic, we were able to adapt differently, because we were able to turn those commuter services down. So it made a big difference.
Thank you so much. I'm going to move on to the next question, and I think, Barbara, this is another one for you. The questionnaire or the the person is asking, summers get very hot. What approach do you take to ensure that the bus fleet has great climate control, especially in the afternoons?
We are very proactive in those air conditioning and heating campaigns. We started in March with an air conditioning campaign in our maintenance facility to make sure that all the air conditions were tested. Now, in this weather, you know, it's kind of a climate change, it's unpredictable. We still will probably have problems if we have over one hundred-degree days. And a bus has gone on a long route. What we've done is to make sure that we have bus availability. In case a bus goes down, we can get a bus back out there really quickly on that route. But today, I feel pretty confident that we're on top of making sure that the buses will be air-conditioned and that our customers will be comfortable.
Thank you so much, Barbara. It's good to know we're prepared for those hot days, those that are coming. Exactly. So again, our next question that we have has to do with specific bus routes. And so Perrin, this is definitely for you, this question. And it asks, why is the L three hundred, the Lake Ridge to Mark Center route still suspended?
Thank you, Cynthia. This is a great question. As we've mentioned, many of our routes had really low ridership. And in particular, a few routes were really low. Those were our two routes to the Mark Center from Lake Ridge and Dale City. Our Tyson's to Woodbridge Route was very low, and our Haymarket to Roslyn Route was very low. So we had to look at those. One being because of the funding source. We have a pool of money from the state that sponsors these routes, and it goes so far. And with limited fare revenue coming in, it was really burning through the available money that was there. And with so many people working from home, it just didn't make sense when there were alternate routes that could be used, even though it may have required a transfer to get from, say, Lake Ridge to Mark Center, you'd have to go to the Pentagon and then take the Metro Bus back to Mark Center. We need to take longer for people. Tried to do it in a way that at least there was a backup way for people to get there. But in June, as ridership started coming back up overall, we did re-implement the Dale City to Mark Center route, and we've restructured it to come through the Warner Road Lot. So at least it's a bit closer, closer to the Lake Ridge area. And with parking capacity only at about twenty-five percent of where it was pre-pandemic, there's plenty of parking to welcome residents from over the eastern side of Prince William County, whereas in the past, it was really difficult to find a parking space. So we're just watching that to see how that grows. And then if demand warrants and we see that it's needed, then we'll look at Lake Ridge again. But for now, we really want to focus on having that one route be more centrally focused to take in the entire eastern side of the county, and then look where else we can add back in little by little as that ridership demand comes back, because people start going back to work. The Department of Defense has been the one constant agency for the source of our ridership, and that's mainly because the Pentagon is such a high employment generator for us. And they keep increasing the amount of people coming back. And I think that's going to spill over to these other D E locations in the future. So we'll just kind of use the Dale City route as a bellwether to see what happens over the next few months and see what happens next.
Awesome. I have a follow-up to that also, Perrin. You know, people are always looking for new bus service. And so particularly service along Route twenty-eight, there is a question, when will we have bus service along Route twenty-eight?
Route twenty-eight is a very important corridor. Right now, it's it's under a lot of construction, especially in the I sixty-six. And with the Silver Line Phase Two extending out to Loudoun County and Western Fairfax County, there's some opportunities out there that we're certainly looking at. As we bring online more commuter lots in the I sixty-six corridor, there could be the potential to look at new travel patterns that we don't have right now that require a car. You can't really do it in transit right now. But perhaps Western County to the Dulles Corridor could be something that we end up looking at, as well as on top of the twenty-eight corridor on the eastern side, looking at other areas such as the Old Town Alexandria area, King Street Eisenhower, where there's a lot of employment development that's happened over the years that might be ripe for us to start serving it with a direct service. Department of Homeland Security is moving into the St. Elizabeth's facility near Bowling Air Force Base. That's another area that we're looking at that we don't have service. So as these areas develop and roadways become easier and the infrastructure is there to make it easier for the bus to travel to those locations, it'll become, these will be attractive destinations for people to turn to transit and not drive solo to these places.
I'm sure our passengers, you know, look forward to that time. Thank you so much, Perrin.
Yes, thanks, Perrin. And then we're going to move on. We've got another question, and Joe, I think this one might be right up your alley. The question is, have you thought about working with micro-transport providers like Uber or Lyft to help increase ridership?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I would say the answer to that is yes, but ideally not Uber and Lyft. You know, there are many other operators in the space, TransLog, Via, TransDev, RideCo, Magic Bus, the the list goes on and on. Everything from where they are simply just software as a service, where you you provide the vehicle and they provide the software that operates it, all the way up to they provide the vehicle. I think that, you know, the Uber and Lyft offerings have tended to be, you know, much smaller kind of taxi-type programs, taxi shuttle-type programs, whereas we're looking to do something that would be much more conventionally realized as transit, you know, using buses, which, you know, like all of our backgrounds on the call tonight, have OmniRide on them, and they're driven by, you know, OmniRide employees, and they are recognizable as transit. You know, we are looking to use those in locations where it makes sense. A good example coming up is we're looking at doing a pilot. And for those people who are interested, I encourage them to attend virtually the board meeting at the, on the eighth of July, I believe it is, where we'll be discussing this. You know, looking at having a zone in the western side of the county where we can offer flexible transit, this micro-transport, we would basically allow us to repurpose and use some of the downtime from our paratransit vehicles on that side of the of the county to be able to offer basically on-demand transit over the course of a bus route. This would allow folks to still call in and make and and make rides if they want. They can use an app. It's going to give them more points of aggregation, potentially, you know, better headways, more flexibility, hours of service. And on top of that, it's much more efficient for us. It's right-sizing the service. So it allows us to, you know, answer some of those questions that people always have about, you know, this particular bus route is not being utilized effectively. Can we right-size it? Can we use a smaller vehicle in a more dynamic way and get more people on it? And the answer is yes. And so we're sticking our toes in that water. And if it makes sense to do it, if it pans out, if this pilot works, then we will look to do it in other places, because it's all part of, you know, serving the community in that more dynamic way. And most importantly, you know, being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And and this is the type of stuff that will allow us to do that where appropriate. We are always the bus company. We are always going to have fixed route transit. That is the bread and butter of what we do. But in the places where we can tinker around the edges, then we owe it to the people who hold the purse strings and the people who ride our buses to do that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, hearing about the micro-transport is really exciting. So we look forward to hearing more on the eighth. And I know we're a little after eight o'clock this evening, but I think maybe we have time to squeeze in just one more question. And Bob, this one is for you. It's talking about the buzz. There's a lot of buzz about the autonomous vehicles. So what is the future for this regarding transit, autonomous vehicles?
So everyone thinks autonomous vehicles are the Jetsons, where I'm just going to lay back in my car, read the newspaper, chit-chat, you know, have a cup of coffee with the wife and kids, et cetera, et cetera. And in reality, autonomous vehicles are not made for high-speed, speed kills. There's infrastructure. Cameras can't tell the difference between a child and a deer or a log in the road as opposed to a traffic cone. And that's one of the big challenges when it comes to speed. They work fantastic in low-speed environments. So and and Keolis has actually experienced with this in Las Vegas, some other locations. So Barbara, did you want to talk a little bit about that or just leave it with me? I don't know how your audio is working.
Yes, and we've we've also piloted this in other places around the world. So it's it's it's, as Bob says, there are still some kinks to be worked out in that. And it doesn't eliminate jobs, because you still have to have someone monitoring and almost using a controller for the vehicle. I do think that we'll see it in the future, but not immediately. Would you agree with that, Bob?
I would. And really, I see what we do being pretty much staying the same way in a lot of ways. I could actually see what they call Islands of Autonomy, describe this where maybe you don't get to take a car inside of DC. You got to leave it at the bridge kind of scenario. But inside DC, you've got your mapped-out podcars. And where you're really going to see it deployed, and it wouldn't surprise me if you see it in the next twenty-four months or so, is through the Amazon world. Their their biggest expense is a driver pulling up, jumping out and running and putting on your step and ringing a doorbell. They are looking at how can they deploy, drive that Amazon vehicle into your neighborhood? And most neighborhoods are cul-de-sacs. And you might have, from one cul-de-sac to the other, is only five hundred feet. You might have that Amazon vehicle pull in, and it deploys the drones and deploys robotics into the neighborhood to deliver the packages to the front door and come home. Once you start to see that, then you've got the learning technology. But our interstates are not quite ready for pure autonomous vehicles. So we have a whole lot to learn, big questions about insurance companies, et cetera, but they're coming. You're going to start seeing a whole lot more in the next five years. And the big things that will drive it will be how we shift in mobility in terms of walkability, livability of cities. And secondarily, it is going to be that artificial intelligence learning combined with battery life. You put those things together, and that's where the game changes. So that's why we're lucky to have Keolis as a partner to identify where it fits, how it works, and gives us the chance to learn. And I got to give them props, they have an amazing alternative fuels fleet that they maintain out in foothill transit that we're going to be studying as part of the electric vehicle program. So the entire, what Keolos brings to the table goes beyond just our traditional operations and maintenance, but pulls in all fuels, autonomous vehicles, and gives us that worldwide perspective that we can bring into the Prince William community.
Thanks very much, Bob. I keep telling people that this is a really exciting time to be in transit. It really is. It's awesome. So thanks very much to all the attendees on tonight's town hall. We very much appreciate you coming to spend time with us on your Wednesday evening. And I also want to thank the panelists for their insight. Thanks very much for spending time with us as well. And Bob, do you have any final comments before I say goodbye?
Right. It's fare-free locally. You know, take take an afternoon off, get a cup of coffee, walk out there, check out the bus. It's easy. If you have any questions, you can always reach us online, call our phone number, hit the bat signal. Perrin will come find you and put you on a bus. So.
That's the bus signal.
That's right. The bus signal, not the bat signal. Okay, with that, thanks again, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.